Welcome to another broadcast of the Lorraine County Commissioners' General Meeting. Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
Would you stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, and welcome to the January 20th meeting of the Lorraine County Board of Commissioners. Madam Clerk?
Under Resolutions Number 1, Job and Family Services Bills.
So moved. Second discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Investments? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Appropriations? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Transfers? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
There are no advances or repayments, requisitions? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Travel expenses? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Bills? So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Number nine, under the Commissioners, authorize various personnel actions as we came down the summary for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of Commissioners.
Commissioners, at this time, I would like to request an executive summary at the end of the meeting to discuss potential new hires.
Thank you, Mr. Cordes.
Number 10, designate personal exemptions for employees within the jurisdiction of Lorraine County Board of, Lorraine County Commissioners Office pursuant to ORC Section 124.11A and 8, and the Ohio Administrative Code, Section 123, 1 through 502. Administrative assistance to Commissioner Ted Calo and Laura Kukowski.
Commissioners have any questions?
No.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Establish compensation for law directors prosecuting violations of state law in municipal courts, ORC 1901.34C for the year 2005. Lorraine, Elaria, and Oberlin will receive $10,000 each. North Ridgeville and Amherst, $7,500. Avon Lake, Avon, Sheffield Village, and Sheffield Lake, $5,000. South Amherst, New Wellington, $2,000. And Kipton, Rochester, Grafton, Vermont, and Long Range will receive $1,000.
This is a negotiated item. Mr. Ennis, would you just like to briefly explain it, please?
The Ohio Revised Code requires the Commissioners to, in effect, pay a share to reimburse the municipalities for the work that their local prosecutors do in prosecuting state cases. So some time ago, we met with all of the law directors and solicitors of the municipalities and kind of worked out this compensation formula. So this has been by agreement with everybody, I'd say five, six years now, maybe longer than that.
Thank you, Jerry. Also move. Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Children and Families Council, instruct the clerk to advertise requests for proposals for Lorraine County Children's and Families Council bedding materials. This notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on January 24th and 31st, and to be open at 2:00 PM on February 7th in Commissioners' Public Hearing Room.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Community Development Department, extend the completion date for RE Rice, Inc., until May 15, 2005, for the City of Amherst-Mawneeding Park project. This was a CDBG FYO3 activity in the amount of $9,586.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Is this for playground equipment?
Yes.
Mr. Twining?
Yes, it is playground equipment, and it is for Amherst City, and it's from the CDBG block grants. They're putting in handicapped accessible equipment, so it's an ADA compliance issue.
Wonderful, thank you.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise notice of public hearing for the first CDBG FYO5 public hearing on February 10. Notice will be published in the Morning Journal on January 27th and February 3rd.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise requests for qualifications for proposals, RFQs, RFPs, for Lorraine County's Fiscal 2005 Community Housing Improvement Program, CHIP application, preparation, CHIP grant administration, implementation, and community housing improvement strategic update for the fiscal year 2005. Notice will be published in the Chronicle-Telegram on January 24th, and to be received no later than 4:00 PM on February 7th in the Lorraine County Purchasing Department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Instruct the clerk to advertise RFQs, RFPs, for Lorraine County Community Block Grant and CDBG infrastructure programs. This notice will be published in the Morning Journal on January 28th, and to be received no later than 4:00 PM on February 14th in the Lorraine County Purchasing Department.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Job and Family Services, approve and enter into 4D purchase of service contracts between Lorraine County Child Support Enforcement Agency and the County Prosecutor's Office, Clerk of Courts, and Domestic Relations Court, Juvenile Division. Authorize Director of Job and Family to execute documents on behalf of the Board effective retroactive January 1, 2005 through December 31, 2005. For the Prosecutor's Office, the non-federal matching funds is $224,353. Federal matching is $435,508.76, for a total of $659,871.76. Clerk of Courts, non-federal matching is $15,973.20. Federal matching funds is $31,680.80, for a total of $46,980. Under Domestic Relations, non-federal matching is $144,181.54. Federal matching is $279,881.82, for a total of $424,633.36. For Domestic Courts Juvenile, non-federal matching funds is $71,942.64. Federal matching is $139,653.63, for a total of $211,596.
DAC is here from the Child Support Enforcement Agency. Dee, do you have any comments?
Only that, on all 4D contracts, there's federal funds that come to the county if there is a match of 34 percent. So we get 66 percent from the federal government. The Child Support Enforcement Agency has over 30,000 child support and spousal support cases in Lorraine County, and some of the work that we must do on those cases needs to be done by these departments, and thus, we contract with them to provide various services.
Thank you, Dee. Also move for approval.
Second.
Further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Approve and enter in Amendment Number 1 of the Transportation Agreement between Job and Family Services and Life Care Ambulance, Inc. This amendment will reflect an increase in the contract value by $10,000, total contract not to exceed $20,000. All other provisions of Resolution 04-454 adopted June 17th remain in federal.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Solid Waste Management District, fund the requests on Lorraine City Schools in the amount of $80,000 for four playground projects. They will be purchasing playground equipment that will be used at the elementary schools.
Mr. Billman?
Dan Billman, Solid Waste Director. Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning, Dan.
Lorraine School, City Schools initiated some contact with us a month or so ago. They have a $216 million building program going on in Lorraine, and so we started discussions on supplying some grant funding for new playgrounds for those particular schools. The, there is four schools at this time involved. We thought that probably about $20,000 apiece for the schools with a total of $80,000 would help them out greatly. The material that's going to be used in the playgrounds is going to be at least 50 percent recycled material, which includes plastic, steel, aluminum. The total cost of the playground is probably about $50,000, and the, they're going to use also rubber tires as a mulch. So the total project is going to be $50,000 per playground. We're going to, what I would recommend is that we give them $80,000, $20,000 per playground, which will, will help them out greatly. We do have some people from Lorraine City Schools with us today. Dan DiNacola, he's the Director of Facilities, he's here. Dean Schnur, he's the Director of Community Relations, Dean is here. Robert Campana, Robert is on the Bond Oversight Committee for the schools. And Elaine Banks, Elaine is the Acting Superintendent. Dr. De Morgan is on sick leave. So I think Mr. Schnur would like to give you a presentation.
Welcome.
Good morning, Commissioners, and thank you for inviting us here today, and also thank you to Mr. Billman. I'd like to give you just a brief update on our project, and then extend a request to you for the money. As Mr. Billman mentioned, Dr. Morgan sends her regrets. She recently had some surgery, and she's recovering right now, so she can't be here. As you know, we're in the middle of a $216 million construction and renovation project. When it is completed, we will have 13 new buildings and seven renovated, which will provide a new face for all of Lorraine City Schools, a wonderful opportunity for all of our students. Most recently, we completed our first building. The Frank Hocento Elementary School was completed on October, well, we have a dedication on October 31st of last year. Fabulous turnout for that event, gave the opportunity, a chance, or gave the community an opportunity to view the new buildings and some of the offerings there. One unique portion of the Frank Hocento School, and will be included in all of our schools, are the playground concept. We actually have three playgrounds located at each of the elementary schools. They're separated by fences, and they're designated by grade level. One for K and pre-K, one for first and second grade, and then one for third, fourth, and fifth grades. This system allows for better surveillance of the playgrounds, of course, and provides a heightened level of safety for the kids. You wouldn't want a kindergartner playing on equipment that's designed for a sixth grader, could lead to injuries and problems. At the Frank Hocento School, we purchased the equipment, and also, as Mr. Billman mentioned, we purchased ground cover. The ground cover was 100 percent recycled material in the form of rubber. In the schools that we have opening for the rest of the year, which total four elementaries and two middle schools, we would like to change the specs for those playground equipment. As Mr. Billman pointed out, we would like to require 50 percent of the material in the equipment be comprised of recycled steels, rubbers, whatever materials are necessary. Unfortunately, the State of Ohio does not designate enough funding to do some of the extra things we'd like to do, like using recycled materials. But they have left an opening for us in the form of locally funded projects. This is a way to obtain some funds locally through businesses, through government entities, or other means to expand on the current project and provide an even better opportunity for our kids. You've probably read about the SMART boards that we were installing in Frank Hocento School and intend to install in the other schools. That's part of a locally funded initiative. We're also working on a locally funded initiative for our auditoriums in the high schools. We're asking you to provide us with these dollars to help us fund the playground equipment in the four elementary schools which we have opening. As Mr. Billman pointed out, the equipment itself costs about $50,000. The ground padding costs about $20,000. So the total cost for each of those elementary schools would be $70,000. The money which we're requesting from the county would help us out tremendously, and let us provide these services to the students which aren't stipulated by the state. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Schnur. At this time, I would make a formal request to the Commissioners that you do consider the $80,000 grant to the Lorraine City Schools.
Thank you, Mr. Billman.
Do you have any questions for me?
Questions, Commissioners? Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to say, Theresa, before we vote on it, I'm very impressed with what Lorraine City Schools are doing. And even though I live in the Amherst School District, my business is located in Lorraine, I think it's a very important part of the rebirth of downtown Lorraine and the rest of the city based on these schools. They're doing a very good job. If no one's seen the Frank Hocento Elementary School yet, you should take a tour of it. It's an awesome facility.
Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Second.
Aye.
You want to quote?
Oh, aye, I'm sorry. I was reading the next one down.
Thank you to those who accompanied Mr. Schnur this morning. It's nice to see you, and good luck on your building campaign.
The next one, under Alcohol and Drug Addiction Services Board, appoint various members to that board. One, Jaclyn Desenza, filling the unexpired term of Judy Newhoff, expiring June 30, 2005. And Edwin Garcia, filling the unexpired term of John Langlowness, expiring June 30, 2007.
Also moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under Community Corrections Board, reappoint various members to Lorraine County Community Corrections Board effective retroactive January 1, 2005, expiring January 1, 2007. Members to be appointed are Nora Banks, Vanessa Cordero, Tony Sabini, Lieutenant Jack Hammond, Elaine Georges, John McAviney, and Don Reiser.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under Community College, reappoint Victor Stewart as a member to the College Board of Trustees effective January 20, 2005, expiring, I forgot to fill in that blank, but...
Whatever their term is.
Yes.
Okay. Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Under the MRDD, accept the resignation of John D. Cole as a member to the Board of Mental Retardation and Development Disabilities, and authorize appointment of Janet Taylor Romalis effective January 20, 2005 through December 30, 2008.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Under the Sheriff, authorize Lorraine County Sheriff to participate in FYO5 bullet vest partnership program, and apply to the Bureau of Justice Assistance for the purchase of five bullet resistance vests. This program allows states and units of local government to receive up to 50 percent of the cost. Per the labor agreement with the Deputies Union, bullet resistant vests are to be purchased for all members of the bargaining unit whose deputies necessitate the use of such vests. Authorize the sheriff to submit this application via the Internet no later than March 10, 2005.
You have comments, Mr. Cordes?
No, ma'am.
Also move.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Mr. Cordes, County Administrator?
I have one, one brief issue this morning, Commissioners. There was some travel that needs to be amended for the Board of Elections for their travel requests that they submitted, and it came yesterday, and I'm going to pass it to the clerk and ask her to read it. Without those amendments, they, they can't attend the conference that they were going to. They called yesterday, and it seemed to be a legitimate request to bring up quickly. This will avoid any complications later.
So we're going to amend Resolution 04912, 4, 1, 2...
I think it says 6 on the front, doesn't it, on the...
7.
7.
For six people for a seminar coming up and has to be paid for in advance, $40 per person. So that's...
Total of $240. Also move.
Second.
Any further discussion? Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
I have no further comments to report this morning except to remind the Board that I requested an executive session at the conclusion of the meeting. Thank you.
Mr. Ennis, Assistant, County Commissioner?
Madam Chair, I don't have any new litigation issues, but there is a pending litigation issue that I would like to discuss with the Commissioners in executive session.
It was nice of you to clarify that that was pending and that you don't have any new.
We haven't been sued yet, Jerry.
They're getting a track record. Thank you, Mr. Ennis. Commissioners' Report? Commissioner Kukowski? Nothing at this time, thank you. Mr. Calo?
Nothing at this time.
I have none.
And I have no report either.
All right. Board Correspondents? I move the reading be waived.
Second.
Discussion. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Public Comment? Anyone wishing to address the Board this morning? Please come to the microphone, state your name. We home free today, Elizabeth? You're not going to talk to us? All right. Please.
Camera time is good for you, Dean.
My apologies. I just wanted to let you know that we do have some brochures which detail the playground equipment that we'll be installing on the schools, and a sample, if you'd like to take a look at it. I'll leave the brochures, but I have to take the sample back.
Okay.
Thank you again.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Thank you again for your attendance this morning. I move we adjourn to executive session to discuss the purposes outlined by the Administrator. Second. Ms. Blair?
Aye.
Ms. Kukowski?
Aye.
Mr. Calo?
Aye.
Unless otherwise announced, meetings are held Thursday mornings at 9:30 at the Lorraine County Administration Building, 226 Middle Avenue, 4th floor, downtown Elaria. These are public meetings, and as always, you are invited to attend.
We've all heard the gruesome statistics concerning child abuse. Maybe you've dismissed them and convinced yourself there's nothing you can do to help. Truth is, you can't help. Voices for Children can make you an advocate to a child in Lorraine County who desperately needs your help. Make the time to make a difference. Call Voices for Children today and find out how you can become part of the solution in speaking up for an abused child. We need your help.
In 1787, the Continental Congress organized the lands from the Ohio River to the Mississippi into the Northwest Territories. In 1803, the first of these territories to become a state was Ohio. Ohio was in turn divided into various land grants, including the Connecticut Western Reserve in the northeast corner of the state. The Western Reserve included the area that is today Lorraine County. As Ohio gradually increased its counties to the present 88, the land we know as Lorraine County went through several changes. Until 1810, the area was split between Geoga and Portage Counties. When the area was being organized into Lorraine County in 1822, it was created out of land from Huron, Cuyahoga, and Medina Counties. At the time of its birth, Lorraine County included Olmsted Township, now in Cuyahoga County, Spencer and Homer Townships, now in Medina County, and Troy and Sullivan Townships, now in Ashland County. This map illustrates the county as it appeared at the time of Ohio's centennial. And although some of the townships have been absorbed by incorporation, it also represents the shape of Lorraine County today. Let's take a brief historical look at each of Lorraine County's 21 townships. In 1807, the Calvin Hodley and Herman Bronson families of Waterbury, Connecticut, began the settlement of Columbia. After a three-month trek, the pioneers arrived in their new homeland in time to celebrate Christmas. The Bronsons, including their seven-month-old son, began that winter sheltered by their overturned bobsled wagon converted into a frontier lean-to. The mouth of the Black River also saw the beginning of its first settlement in 1807, when Azariah Beebe established a trading post for Nathan Perry. This area, which 20 years earlier had seen a short-lived Moravian mission, would gradually grow into the village of Charleston in the township called Black River. Years later, this township would be removed from county maps because of the incorporation of the city of Lorraine. Charleston adopted the county's name of Lorraine when the city was incorporated in 1874. The dramatic growth of the city was spurred on by the expanding fishing and shipbuilding industries. In 1894, when Tom Johnson brought his steel mill to town, Lorraine's destiny to be the county's largest city was assured. In 1813, the township of Ridgeville was officially organized. Three years earlier, members of the Beebe, Terrell, and Root families had established this new settlement they called Roots Town. The change to Ridgeville was decided upon to indicate the sand ridges that passed through the area, and provided transportation routes and fertile farmland. The area around the intersection of Butternut Ridge and Roots Road, first called Briggs Corner, was by 1880 known as Fields Corners, and was the site of the town's water well. With the growth of the city of North Ridgeville, the township of Ridgeville was incorporated out of existence. In 1810, Silas Wilmot, along with Asa and Ira Morgan, erected a cabin on Butternut Ridge, and the community later called Eaton Township was begun. Wilmot married Chloe Hubbard of Ashtabula, and they were given the cabin, thereby becoming the township's pioneering couple. When Ridgeville Township was organized in 1813, it included Eaton, which was at that time called Holbrook. While the area was still a part of Cuyahoga County, the township of Eaton was separated from Ridgeville. Its first officers were elected in 1823, while the township was in transition to the new Lorraine County. Amherst's township's founding can be traced to one Jacob Shoup. After first settling on the Black River, he moved in 1811 to the Beaver Creek. By 1815, he had erected a grist mill and the area's first distillery. Whiskeville, today the intersection of Roots 58 and 113, earned its nickname as a center for the production of this important pioneer commodity. As the primary community of the township developed at the old spring, it came to be known as Amherst Corners. By 1836, the name Amherstville was recorded in the county offices, and in 1873, the town was incorporated as North Amherst. In 1909, the U.S. Postal Service had to choose between the villages of North and South Amherst. They chose the former, which then became the official and present-day Amherst. In 1917, in the northeast corner of the county, the township of Avon became another of Lorraine County's 21 townships to vanish County's 21 townships to vanish due to city incorporation. In 1814, Wilbur Cahoon had arrived from Montgomery County, New York, to become the first to settle in what was then Troy Township of Cuyahoga County. The farming community grew around its power source, the French Creek. Development along the interurban line would incorporate the northern part of the township into the city of Avon Lake in 1911, with the remainder of the township becoming the village of Avon in 1917. It was families such as the Burl, Day, and Roots who established themselves in the Sheffield area in 1815 and 16. The township of Sheffield would not actually be created until 1824, when the newly-elected Lorraine County Commissioners made the township one of the first acts of their administration. The land had been primarily in Cuyahoga County prior to the 1822 reorganization. The southwest corner of the township was in Huron County and is today the only place to find a small section still called Sheffield Township. The remainder of the area has been incorporated, like its neighbor Avon, with the north becoming Sheffield Lake and the south, the village of Sheffield. In 1816, Colonel Henry Brown of Stockbridge, Massachusetts, purchased a large tract of land known as Number Six, Range 19. Mr. Brown would later name the township after himself by simply adding Helm to his family name. Like the old Saxon ham, the suffix meant home. The Deacon Shepherd family were the first settlers when they arrived on July 4th, 1817. The village of Brownhelm Mills located in Benjamin Bacon's Mill Hollow was one of three communities to develop. Bacon's Corners, or the center, was three miles east of the hollow, while just west of the hollow was Rugby, where stores, a church, a school, and the post office were located. The first settlers to the Grafton Township area were Jonathan and Grendal Rossen in 1816. Ten years later, the Rossens were forced to build a grist mill or forfeit their land under their original agreement with the Western Reserve Land Company. Railroads and quarries were the greatest influence on the growth of the village the locals called Rossenville. The quarrying industry in particular was responsible for the influx of French-Canadian, Welsh, Irish, Polish, and German immigrants. In 1877, when the village was being incorporated, the name Rossenville was dropped in favor of the railroad station name of Grafton. Originally a part of Alaria Township, Carlisle was settled in 1816 by John Bacon of Wyndham County, Vermont. When the new Lorraine County was being organized in 1822, Carlisle Township became its own entity. LaPorte developed as the township village with Phineas Johnson as the first postmaster and hotel owner. In 1840, Anson Berman's Carlisle Nursery became the first of its kind in Lorraine County. Quarrying was another important industry of the township as the sandstone blocks were used for city buildings as far away as Toronto. Founding father Heman Ely owned over 10,000 acres of the land that would be developed into the township of Alaria and the city which also bears his family name. In 1817, Artemis Beebe headed a work crew that came to establish...